Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Charlton Board of Selectment meeting September 13, 2022. I would like to call the meeting to order. I would like everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And while we're standing when we're done with the Pledge of Allegiance, I would like a moment of silence for the nine eleven victims if that's okay with you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A moment of silence. Thank you, and welcome to our meeting. What's up, Peter? We've got some busy stuff going on here.
No, I'm on this. In the back, I'll be quiet. I've met you, Peter, that's not bad.
So as far as accepting the minutes of the regular meeting of August 9?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's like a aye. Unanimous? Community Relations Announcements and Open Forum.
My time to shine. Household hazardous waste and electronic collections are Saturday, September 24, 2022, from 9:00 to 1:00 p.m. at the Casella Waste Service Facility, 165 Barefoot Road in Southbridge. They will require the proof of residency at that time. The Waste Day vouchers are viable for Charlton residents. To get them, visit the Board of Health at 37 Main Street. That's where you sign up for that free voucher. The worth of it is $30. This will pay for half of the car. Sign up by September 22 at 5:00 p.m. for the September 24 Waste Day. Contact the Board of Health, 508-248-2210 if any questions. The Finance Committee is in need of one more member to sit on the committee as an alternate member. If you are interested in serving on that committee, please contact Noreen Smith, a town moderator, at noreen.smith@townofcharlton.net, or Finance Committee Chair Hank Camosi at hank.camosi@townofcharlton.net. It's a very exciting time to join that committee this coming year. Last but not least, this is a proclamation. The American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection reports cancer is the leading cause of death by disease among U.S. children between infancy and age 15. This tragic disease is detected in more than 16,000 of our country's young people every year. An estimated 400,000 children and adolescents are diagnosed with cancer globally each year. Therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of Selectment of the Town of Charlton that Childhood Cancer Awareness Month is recognized in our town in the month of September of 2022.
Very good.
Mr. Chairperson, just briefly.
Yes?
Actually, a nice announcement to make. There's going to be a foliage mill history and hiking tour and talk on October 15 at 10:00 a.m. at the CHPT Little River Parking Area, which is on Fulling Mill Drive. And the note being, please join the Charlton Heritage Preservation Trust as we again feature Frank Morrell, the Charlton Historical Society, for a talk about Charlton Mills, followed by a short foliage-rich hike along the Little River to preserved mill ruins. If you want to stretch your hike out, there's a three-mile loop around the north end of Buffham Lake, or an eight-mile loop around the entire lake, all blue-blazed by the Army Corps of Engineers. There must be trails adjacent to the CHPT trail for anyone wanting to head north, cow tunnel or south. I actually attended this last year, and honestly, it's actually a lot of fun. Frank Morrell does an amazing job talking about the history of the old mill that's down there. And I honestly, I didn't even know it was there. And when you walk down and you see what people had done in the 19th century, literally with just horses and moving enormous boulders to build mills, it's actually pretty impressive. So again, that is October 15 at 10:00 a.m. Thanks, Steve.
I have one to add, unless you already want to talk about the Whosons. So we have to remind everybody that September 21, there's a 6:45 game at Polar Park. It is Charlton's takeover day of Polar Park. We have designated seats lined up on the third baseline. Tickets are, I bought a half a dozen tickets, are $14 to $23, depending on where you want to sit. $5 of each of those tickets gets donated to Charlton Rias. And if those don't know, Charlton Rias is the heating oil, heating oil and assistance for seniors in town. So September 21, we might not have promoted that as much as we were excited about before Old Home Day, because we got all tied, kind of tied up in that. But there's a website, you can get a link off our website.
It's all over social media. You want to buy the tickets through the link so we get credit for our town.
Yep. And then with that, with that, oh, it's also town appreciation, town appreciation. So with that, if town employees who sign up and go, get a $4 voucher?
Two.
Two, $2 voucher to buy a hat, because we can't endorse alcohol at a ballpark. So keep, September 21 coming right around the corner, 6:45, the Plain Syracuse. If you've never been to Polar Park, it'd be a great time to do it. All Charlton people are going to sit together, so. That's my spiel on that. We're done with Community Relations and Open Forum? Is there anybody?
Oh, I'm sorry, Steve. No, I was going to see if anyone actually wanted to speak on Open Forum. I don't know if you called anybody up?
Open Forum?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Sir, please. Absolutely.
Stand here.
There's not a chair for you?
I didn't see one. No, it's fine, I can stand.
Just name, address, everything.
Yes, Eric Borgeson, 1800 Road, Charlton, Mass. Just a point of clarification. I received a, appears to be a lawsuit where the town is suing itself. And I was just wondering if you could give me some clarification on how we can make sure that that's fair. I don't understand how the town can sue itself and play both sides.
I'm not sure which lawsuit you're talking about.
Yeah, it's regards to a zoning board of appeals, and there was a ruling with the building commissioner and the zoning board. I have copies.
Yeah. I'm going to assume that that's what we're talking about in executive session, but, long story short, just generically, it is possible for different town boards, in theory, to sue one another.
Right.
It's not something we obviously like, but there do come times when there are disagreements. They're very rare, but when they do happen, technically, it is feasible. And I'm 99% sure that that's what we're discussing during the executive session, and we'll probably have some type of, we may have a vote when we come out of that to elaborate as best we can. Generally, we can't really comment on legal matters much, just because anything we say here can be used in court.
Sure.
So we're always very careful when it comes to that, but...
I appreciate that, but the, really, the question I have is, how do you ensure transparency and making sure that it's fair balance if you're holding both sides?
Depending upon the case, historically, we would allow each board slash committee to choose their own attorneys. And that's probably the easiest way to do it, so that we aren't handpicking to say, well, you have to use this person that we specifically wanted.
Right.
And again, I know only a little bit about this, and so, again, I'm not saying that directly, but that is, that's always one option that the board slash town likes to do, is basically say, look, go pick your own legal counsel, and we'll just figure it out from there.
So we're going to, we're going to pay for both sides? We're going to sue ourselves?
No, we don't know that yet. But if this is, if this is the executive session topic of this evening, you're going to have to wait until we're done with that before we can comment any further on it. I mean, all we would be doing is guessing.
But you can, you can, you can comment that you're going to be going for fairness and transparency and making sure that you're, to me, it's just where you can just pick one of the sides and say, let's put the better lawyer on this side and, you know, not put another lawyer on that side.
We have a fiduciary responsibility, also, quite honestly, just a moral and ethical one, to make sure that anyone who, regardless of case, gets fair representation. So we would, so we would not play favorites like that.
And we will always lean towards diplomacy before we ever win that.
And then just one final one. You said that it's rare. Can you think of another case when we've sued ourselves in the recent past?
I mean, there's kind of the VGG kind of example there.
Right.
But it's, outside of that, I think it's been a while since...
VGG is a massive multimillion dollar thing.
If you don't mind, I definitely don't want to get into that.
I want to know, what is your involvement in this?
I'm a concerned citizen, because I understand that lawyers are expensive, and if we're going to play both sides of the literal fence, because it's about a fence, or a wall, which is, you know, a tiny little wall, not a giant multi-million dollar...
We can't get further into it. I expect you coming up to Open Forum, but we can't listen to any more of this until we go through executive session. None of us really know. You know, you may know more about it than we do right now. We obviously can't.
I have copies if you do want them. Do you want what I brought?
Nope.
Will this be on the record as me approaching?
Oh, absolutely.
And you don't want any of the materials?
We have them.
Great, okay. Thank you.
But again, I'll just say one last time, like, generically, not talking about a specific case, fairness will always be paramount for this iteration of the board.
Transparency and fairness.
Correct.
And this is also why there's five of us. Everybody's representing the niche or whatever the expertise is in a given field, and we will do everything that we have sworn to do, which is, you know, to, to, you know, be respectful and truthful and above it all, very moral and open to everything that's going on.
Great.
Allow-alowing.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. No worries. Is there anyone that wants to speak up for Open Forum or anybody at home? Seeing none, hearing none? We are going to move on to appointments and resignations. Appointment, the Council of Aging Director.
All right, so 13 applications were received for the Council on Aging Director position. Eight were offered interviews and two declined. Second interviews were held with four candidates. The recommendation of the board, or the Council on Aging, is to appoint Sherri Russell, contingent upon a successful career background and reference check. This is a 40-hour-per-week position at a salary of 63, 752. I recommend the board make the appointment as requested. If approved, the position would start on September 26.
So moved.
Second.
For discussion, any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed? Hearing none, seeing none?
Welcome to the show, Ms. Russell.
Welcome, yeah.
Great. Next is an appointment for the Boston Post-Kane Committee. So attached is a talent bank firm from Judith Masco, seeking to be appointed to the Boston Post-Kane Committee. The committee is recommending the appointment, and the term expiration date is June 30, 2023.
So moved, and thank you, Ms. Masco.
Hi, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? Welcome.
And the next is for requested rescinding of an appointment for the Government Study Committee. The Government Study Committee is asking the board to rescind the appointment of Tom Cirrus as a member of the committee. So far, he has not attended any meetings, nor does he respond to any emails that have been and has not sworn, has not been sworn in by the town clerk. Our office has tried to contact Mr. Cirrus with no response. I recommend the board rescind the appointment, so that way we can advertise the opening.
I know life gets in the way, but yeah, I'm going to motion to rescind the appointment.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Hearing none?
Can we drop that one under new business? Can we drop that one under new business?
The Common Vic approval. One, one under new business. Common Vic. Sturbridge Coffee Roasters.
Yes, I mean...
Oh, you want to jump down to that?
Right here.
Oh, just to get them. Okay. It is, well, 6:44. You sure you want to do that? Okay.
All right, so request for a Common Victorial License for Sturbridge Coffee Roasters LLC. Attached is a request for a Common Victorial License for Coffee and Food from Elvis Dyer for Sturbridge Coffee Roasters LLC to be located at 7 Brookfield Road, previously where Milk and Sugar was. He has completed all the proper paperwork needed, and I recommend the board approve the request.
Mr. Chairperson, are the petitioners here? Oh, hey, guys. Sorry. You want to come up real quick and just take a cheap plug for your business?
Yes.
Cheap and quick, to be honest with you. Because...
What would you like me to say? We make the best coffee around. It's delicious.
There you go.
Breakfast is awesome, lunch is awesome, and everybody's invited. Seven to three from Monday to Friday, eight to three on Saturday, Sunday.
All milk and sugar.
The old milk and sugar spot, park in the back. Please don't park in front of the sewing center.
Excellent. Very good.
I have a sense on this, just my ten cents. Both of the owners, Karen, they all involved with the Dally Charlton Educational Foundation for many, many years. The amount of help that these people, you know, have provided to these kids of our towns, the towns they don't even live in, is unspeakable. So I only hope that our town will welcome you and be as good to you as you were to our kids. Thank you so much, and welcome.
Anytime that we can attract and welcome a new business, I'm always in.
But we need to take a vote on that.
Yes, correct, yeah. I'm assuming all the paperwork's filled out, we're good?
Yeah.
All right. I would accept the motion.
Yep, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Welcome to town, and I'll be stopping in.
Yeah, all right.
Did you bring any coffee?
Right? Too bad it wasn't a close vote.
He was trying, he was trying not to grease the wheel. But then, that's always... Now we are on to Old Home Day. Presentation of awards. As a lot, as a lot of us know, we had to, due to the rain, we had to postpone the presentations of awards, which is a big part of Old Home Day. And we agreed that day in the rain to do it here tonight. Kathleen Walker's going to do the presentation. We have some dignitaries other than us that are less important people in the hallway, I believe. Oh, there's Mr. Fatman. Oh, well, we have quite a few, actually, it looks like.
Kathleen, do you want a chair?
Hi, me?
Do you want a chair?
No, I'm standing.
She's the lady of the ceremony.
Then we all are. We're all walking out front. That's why there are no chairs.
Oh!
So we can hear, so we can check in.
I learned that.
I'll take the high ground. I'll take that. What about me? I got it. Steve. Yes. So, okay, thank you. Microphone?
Thank you.
This is wonderful. So we are extremely honored to have with us Senator Fat, Senator Fatman, Representative Durant, and Representative Frost with us tonight, along with our illustrious Board of Selectment. And thank you all for coming and being here for the award ceremony, which was, as Chairman explained, postponed because of rain first time. Probably 124 years, I don't know. So it's great to have everybody here tonight, because it's televised and we can probably get a bigger audience to see the awards, which are extraordinarily important. So I'm going to start by reading a little bit about the awards. Each year, the Charlton Old Home Day made its six nominations for community service awards for Charlton businesses or residents. The awards are intended to recognize the volunteer work in the community schools and service to fellow citizens. The awards are not intended for those who, during their traditional occupation, complete their tasks, but for those who perform the good deeds purely out of volunteerism and civic duty. Whatever the endeavors, people deserve to be recognized and applauded for their efforts. So so many people do so many good things for this town, and nobody knows about it. So this is a small way to show our appreciation. So the first award is the Youth Community Service Award, which was established in 2011. This award is intended to recognize the positive contributions of a young member of the community who is altruistically pursuing humane efforts in improving the world in which we live. Such an award is to establish an example for others of a young age to follow. And to that end, first, we've given out two of them this year. The first one is to Nina Zawowski, and I think probably her mother's going to set that award for her.
She's in college. She's in college, but she did say, thank you so much. It's humble, and...
I was going to say a little bit about Nina.
Shake your hand.
Helping out with Old Home Day last year in Children's Section, volunteering for the Board of Selectment meetings, et cetera, help representatives of just two activities Nina has participated in. As a member of the National Honor Society, she has volunteered with local charity organizations, including fundraising, volunteering to pack 100 bags of necessities for the homeless, as well as volunteering in soup kitchens and food benches. She also ran the local radio show with Drew Anderson, and helping teenagers with their issues. She has been a member and founder of the debate club, Shepherd Hill Newspaper, as a writer, editor, student council, varsity volleyball, and volunteered to teach youth volleyball. Nina is an outstanding and hardworking teenager and a fine example of youth in this community, and will give a hand.
She's decorating her dorm and...
Is she watching live?
Yeah. When, when, no, Suffolk. Suffolk.
Next award is for Maggie Malali. Is there somebody here for Maggie?
No.
So Maggie has volunteered at various organizations over the past six years, and so has contributed time and service in many different ways. Besides the many PTO events, she is regularly involved in student council and National Honor Society, as well as a frequent volunteer at Chipping at Blessings Farm, at St. Joseph's Vacation Bible School. She is a Project 351 alumni and has done service projects for Craters to Crayons, local food drives, 911 tribute service, with a put-together hygiene product drive to serve the military, and also made a tribute guide for victims on 9/11. Molly, thank you. Just pass for that. This is rich.
Is this sort of fluid thought I'm going to read? Do you have paragraphs before the people come up to get those?
Well, they can, yeah, they can stand it too. So the next one is an Individual Community Service Award, and this is given to those who have made contributions, which have righted up by a little part of the world. And the first one is for Marguerite Gilbert, who has lived in Charlton, so she's five years old. Would she come up and just stand here and listen to us?
Okay, all right. I didn't even know that.
I'm a little, I'm a little shy.
I want to tell you that what I'm reading is only probably a tenth of what I've been told of each one of these people, but they'd be here for two hours. So, and especially, especially with Naj Gilbert. So she has shared her gift of music. Over the years, it's been a sonic home in various churches. Have been making the tree lighting on the common for over 30 years, rehearsed weekly for three months, then presented a Christmas concert to our community for over 30 years. Charlton Music and many BBS summer camps belong to St. Joe's Women's Club for over 20 years, member of the Charlton Garden Club for 18 years, which has helped amplify the common. Was instrumental in starting Troop 338 Boy Scouts over 35 years ago, and served on the committee, which oversees fundraising and ensuring leading activities to the boys. Member of the Glen Echo Labor Association and helped clean up on Earth Day. And thank you very much, Naj. [applause] Can you help this boy? Can you help the boy? Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Did you get a picture of all of us?
Yes.
You want to say people come on? Yeah. All right.
Thank you. Yes. And the next award is for, actually, for two people, husband and wife, Eric and Carrie Reilinger. I'm not sure I'm pronouncing it right here. Eric and Carrie. Did I pronounce your last?
Reilinger.
So Carrie joined the Friends of Animal Shelter, Charlton Animal Shelter, and immediately started up the nutritional assistance program for pets to help families in need. This program helps families keep their companions instead of rehoming them when times get tough, and ensures the pets are getting adequate nutrition. Every two months, Carrie shops for food and delivers food straight to the pet's home. Since Carrie is also the clerk for Focus and a regular helper at Pet Photo for Santa in Cornerstone Bank since joining. Looking after the needs of Charlton's pets, Carrie to Chipping, making sure pet food is available on distribution days. Since 2021, she's been a regular on distribution days, also helping to stock the shelves, carrying out boxes to aid these activities. Carrie and Eric have also been delivering food to people that are home bombed. And Eric joined the boards of the Friends of Animal, Charlton Animal in 2018, and immediately took on the role of treasurer, which he still holds. Eric is a regular helper in his favorite event, Pet Colosseum, Santa in Cornerstone Bank.
Yeah, they go there.
He also helps out for and deliver pet food for the NAPP program, helping needy pets in Charlton. Since 2021, Eric has been a regular at Chipping, now on distribution days, helping stock shelves, putting out carryout boxes, and deliver to customers stuck at home. Thank you very much. [applause]
Thank you guys for everything.
How come she gets to work? [laughter]
Quick picture. Quick check. Who's the picture?
Oh, we got somebody back. Open this up. See, that's what I like. Charlton pride.
Our next Community Service Award goes to Debbie Chesler. And Debbie, would you come up? Debbie has worked as a volunteer in the Town of Charlton for many years. She is a member of the Charlton Heart and Hand Society, the Charlton Lions Club, the SAW Council of Seniors and Law Enforcement Together, the Charlton Reese Foundation, Residential Energy Assistance for Seniors, and the Friendly Friends of Charlton, she leads Seniors. She is also a Charlton SRT member, Community Emergency Response Team, and volunteers for Charlton Chipping Food Piancho. Debbie, welcome. [applause]
You were probably the third person on that.
It was. The Lions Club.
So it's your fault he stayed.
It's not only '29, but it was 20 years ago when I was here.
Debbie, thank you all. Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Oh, I'm giving you a picture.
Your hands, your picture.
Oh, please, my favorites.
You start first. I'd like a photo shoot, so if my husband, my husband, you wanted to take a picture.
Do you want to be in the picture?
I'm actually...
Yeah, come with us. You all sat. You all sat? All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you, President. Congratulations.
And our next Community Service Award, which is the last one, goes to Mike Zereski. It was Mike.
He's hot, isn't he, Mike?
Mike has been a outstanding volunteer here in the Charlton Senior Center for 11 years. He's an active member of the Charlton American Legion, Golden Age Club, and a member of the Friendly Friends of Charlton Seniors. He recently became a member of both the Charlton Council and Aging Board and the dementia-friendly Charlton Committee. Mike has given his time as DJ for various musical events. He has set up several tournaments for the senior center, including Privilege, Pool, and Cornhole. He spends many hours at the senior center, helping with activities and special events. Mike's enthusiastic attitude gets folks up and going. [applause]
Kathleen, I still got a couple more here. You said that was the last one?
The last Community Service.
Oh, 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 I got it.
So...
Oh, now we're good. I got it. Got it. All right. Nice to see you again.
Try to state that I really...
So the Business Award this year goes to the Overlook. Is there somebody here who's up to the Overlook? I can't believe it all. Okay, I, they said they'd be here soon, I'm not sure. Anyway, this award is intended to recognize local businesses who, on a regular basis, support community events, groups, and activities. The Overlook has a longstanding history and commitment to serving as an ambassador and advocate for the Town of Charlton through good deeds, volunteerism, and civic duty. In 1990 and 93, the Overlook gifted land to the town for municipal use. Ryan is an assistant scout master and advancement coordinator within our troop currently. He is a standard fixture at any campfire where he continually teaches geodesic book on a campfire, and specifically to use a Dutch oven to prepare a meal. He has mentored many of these same scouts to reach the prestigious rank of Eagle, the highest rank available to a youth in Boy Scouting. His level-headed demeanor and consistency throughout the years has been a great asset to our community and its youth. Thank you. And two more awards. The Citizen of the Year. This award is the highest honor and is given to a person with consistent presence and repeated acts of major impact. It is with great pleasure we offer this award to Joe Bosher. Joe? Joe was born in Mason, Charlton, and is a true gem of our town. Over the past decade, Joe has worked to care for and manage the Charlton Bridge Number Ninety-two. Through his efforts, he has maintained the appearance of the building as low as a duck peak. Volunteering his own time, he books all activities and building usage which many town residents take advantage of. If not for his sacrifice of time and energy, this historic building would have been abandoned to decay. Joe is also a longtime member of the American Legion, fifteen years, and currently presides over the group as commander. He gives selflessly and happily. Joe has truly been an outstanding citizen, and through his generosity has made Charlton a better town for all residents. He is truly a great man.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Bosher.
And this last award brings tears to all of our eyes, makes us happy at the same time because of the gifts that we have experienced knowing this woman. So the customers' award is given to a departed citizen who gave much to their community. And this year's award goes to Kathy Keel. And is Bonnie coming up today?
Who's coming up?
The children are coming up. Her daughter wrote the following, and it echoes all the feelings of all of us who knew Kathy. "Our mother's love for this town has had a huge impact on us, throughout our lives and all that knew her. Mom's sad untimely passing on April 20th this year has been challenging for us and many to accept. We hope her actions of love, unselfishness, and dedication to this town and all may continue to guide us today and forever. Some of Mom's volunteering includes the Old Home Day, which she brought most of us into, the Helping Hand Society, the Housing Authority, Earth Day, the Lions Club. The American Legion recognized her patriotism and how she volunteered her time serving in the SAWs at the senior center cooking, taking pictures, and of course, everyone enjoyed her Halloween costumes. Our mother is bravely missed. She was an icon to this town, capturing a moment in a picture along with our stepfather Quentin. They made Charlton a better place to live. May you continue to work your magic, Mom, with all of us and to this town we love so much. Thank you, Stanley, Jim, Kathy, Mike, Elaine, and a few." Kathy was the strongest, smartest, most beautiful, caring, and unselfish person we know, and we're so proud and lucky she was our mom. In memory of our mother, Kathy Keel, we, her children, humbly and lovingly and proudly accept this citation in her memory. So this concludes our award ceremony, and I am so grateful for all of you for coming, and so grateful for the selectmen for having us. And this year has been a great year. We stopped playing in January and all the way up, which we did through September, and you're pretty devastated that it had to be canceled.
We forget the town administrator too, you know what I'm saying? Keeps forgetting him, you know what I'm saying? We recognize a lot what he's done in the last few minutes on some of the Old Home Day projects and things, right? Getting things done for us.
There is so many people that I have forgotten, Jim, today, that helped out. The committee is, there were twenty of us on the committee, and the majority of the board of the selectmen came to almost every meeting, and they weren't on the committee, so they didn't have to come. I don't know where they found the time, but they came and they threw themselves into the whole thing. So, and we had a lot of fun, in spite of the fact that they didn't go the way we wanted to. The boys of us on the committee just had a lot of laughs and teased each other and just had a good time. And the great thing about this committee and this Old Home Day is that, I don't know what religion, I don't know what politics, what party anybody belongs to, we're all different, but we're there together, and we're laughing and enjoying each other and working together to make Charlton a better community, so.
It's all about, how much can you lift?
And send in your nominations for next year. Think about it. Pay attention to the world around you, and we want to honor people. We always, at the very last minute, we're begging people to send in their nominations, and it's nice to not miss people.
And Mike Ince, Kathleen, Mike, Jerry, Mike, and above it all, Chief Kruenier over there with the frog contents going on every single year. He doesn't even live in the sunrise, just so you know. This is crazy. Big, huge, you know, role models to follow. And come, join us. It's fun.
Just one more thing, just want to appreciate the town because the Old Home, all of it, maybe you've been getting a little bit on the older side.
We're older than we were when the meeting started.
We've got a lot of younger volunteers, which is super, because we can pass our knowledge on to these younger people and keep it all going. So I just want to say that. Thanks for all the young people that signed up.
Yeah, cool.
Thank you, guys. Where's my, where's my award? Thank you, guys, for coming. Thank you. Thank you, Katie. Yes, I'll see you next time.
It's hot in here. We need fans.
And I have sweater. I think I'm in a place or something.
This is awesome. That was great.
Do you know? We got a, um...
We're gonna go back to Waikiki.
A temali. You mean, it's giving... So I got a random person Hawaiian, a random person that had moved to New York, walked up to me the other day and said, "You guys have a, your board is fantastic."
What's that?
A banana person walked up to me over the weekend and just, we had no clue who they are, right? And they said, "This one's the best one of selecting I've ever had." It looks like, like, particularly late sixties. And I've been in town, and I was like, I wish I, I should have asked him. And I was like, pretty much.
Send money.
Are we still on?
Well, you... That's a blast from the past.
Blast from the past.
Yeah. Probably like thirty years. You lost weight since thirty years ago. You look good. What's that? Yeah. Rolls Royce. Rolls Royce M2U, power generation, yeah, yeah.
Powerful.
Three times, yeah. We'll, we'll, our next commission text will be in 2026.
Mine is, yeah, yeah, yeah. I just flew back from Houston, I was at the network conference, and reporting for a 25 KBA poll map, two point three years, or tad more, two point three.
Generators, I must...
No, those were house problems, the Soviet house. So what does that mean? Build back America, can't build a back house.
So, no. One hurricane, and now it's gonna go to six years, right? Oh, yeah, yeah.
There's young generation in the world.
No, we're gonna talk about that. Yeah. Okay, so, do we want to, we want to get rolling on this?
Yeah.
We're gonna call the meeting back to order. We're gonna start with the, unfortunately, I didn't use that gavel. We're gonna start with the Glen Echo drawdown?
Yeah.
This is my cheat sheet.
So I guess the, um... Let me catch up here. So it was, it was Ms. Nowak, the president of the Glen Echo Association, requested time on the agenda?
Yes.
So I think we need to talk to her.
First? Sure. So, Jackie Nowak, 22 Park Road, president of the Glen Echo Lake Association. So last year, we applied for, in conjunction with the town, a new order of conditions to do a staggered drawdown for Glen Echo Lake, starting at a four-foot, first year, five-foot next year, six-foot, up to seven feet. There is a shallow, one, a single, two residents with shallow wells on the lake. One person does not have an issue with drawdown, doesn't lose, if he loses water, he doesn't, we've never heard from him, let's put it that way. Next-door neighbor does, does not want it to go lower than a four-foot draw, also does not want to work with us in terms of giving him water, potable water, you know, water buffalo, whatever, to get him through the winter months. Also does not want to do anything with his well, my understanding, even though he is eligible to dig his existing well deeper. That came out at the last Board of Health meeting back in August. So what, we were in a conservation meeting, and Rose said, "Oh, well, because of this, what the Board of Health had originally said is no, we shouldn't go below a four-foot draw." And I said, "Well, that's not really up to them necessarily because the town is the applicant on the order of conditions." And we went through all the appropriate procedures, gave all the information to the Department of Environmental Protection, they gave us a DE, they reviewed everything and gave us a DEP number. Also, in the order of conditions, we put in a contingency plan for... different, but we're there together and we're laughing and enjoying each other and working together to make Chautauqua a better community, so.
It's all about, how much can you live?
And send in your nominations for next year. Think about it. Pay attention to the world around you and we want to honor people. We always, at the very last minute, we're begging people to send in their nominations and it's nice to not miss people.
And Mytensens, Kathleen, Mike, Jerry, Mike, and above it all Chief Kruenier over there with the frog contents going on every single year. He doesn't even live in the sunrise, just so you know. This is crazy. Big, huge, you know, role models to follow. And come, join us. It's fun.
Just one more thing, just want to appreciate the town because the old home, all of it, maybe you've been getting a little bit on the older side.
We're older than we were when the meeting started.
And we've got a lot of younger volunteers, which was super because we can pass our knowledge on to these younger people and keep it all going. So, I just want to say that. Thanks for all the young people that signed up.
Yeah, cool.
Thank you guys. Where's my, where's my award? Thank you guys for coming. Thank you. See you next time.
It's hot in here. We need fans.
And I have some glitter. I think I'm gonna put this on. This is awesome. That was great.
Do you know, we got a, um...
We're gonna go back to Glanico.
A tamale. A few minutes, give me. So, I got a random person Hawaiian, a random person that had moved to New York, walked up to me the other day and said, "You guys have a, your board is fantastic." I mean, I don't know.
What's that?
A random person walked up to me, um, over the weekend and just, we had no clue who they are, right? And they said, "This one's the best one of the selectmen we've ever had." It looks like, like, particularly late sixties. And I've been in town, I was like, I wish I, I should have asked him. And I was like, pretty much.
Send money. Well, it's a blast from the past.
Blast from the past.
Yeah, probably like 30 years. You lost weight since 30 years ago. You look good. Yeah. Rolls Royce. Rolls Royce M2U, power generation, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Powerful.
Three times, yeah. We'll, we'll, our next mission checks will be in 2026. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I just flew back from Houston, the network conference and reporting for 25 KBA poll now, 2.3 years, or tad now, 2.3 years.
Generators, I must say?
No, those were house problems, the Soviet house, so what does that have to do with building back America? Can't build a back house.
So, no. One hurricane and now it's gonna go to six years, right? Oh, yeah, yeah.
There's young generation in the world.
No, we're gonna talk about that. Yeah. Okay, so, do we want to get rolling on this?
Yeah.
We're gonna call the meeting back to order. We're gonna start with the, first I'm gonna use that gavel. We're gonna start with the Glanico drawdown?
Yeah.
So, I guess the, um, let me catch up here. So, it was, it was Ms. Nowak, the president of the Glanico Association requested time on the agenda?
Yes.
So, I think we need to talk to her.
First?
First?
Sure. So, Jackie Nowak, 22 Park Road, president of the Glanico Lake Association. So, last year we applied for, in conjunction with the town, a new order of conditions to do a staggered drawdown for Glanico Lake, starting at a four-foot, first year, five-foot, next year, six-foot, up to seven feet. There is a shallow, one, a single, two residents with shallow wells on the lake. One person does not have an issue with drawdown, doesn't lose, if he loses water, he doesn't, we've never heard from him, let's put it that way. Next door neighbor does, does not want it to go lower than a four-foot draw, also does not want to work with us in terms of giving him water, potable water, you know, water buffalo, whatever, to get him through the winter months. Also does not want to do anything with his well, my understanding, even though he is eligible to dig his existing well deeper. That came out at the last Board of Health meeting back in August. So, what, we were in a conservation meeting and Rose said, "Oh, well, because of this, what the Board of Health had originally said is no, we shouldn't go below a four-foot draw." And I said, "Well, that's not really up to them necessarily because the town is the applicant on the order of conditions." And we went through all the appropriate procedures, gave all the information to the Department of Environmental Protection, they gave us a DE, they reviewed everything and gave us a DEP number. Also in the order of conditions, we put in a contingency plan for that shallow well to provide water. And, and we're just asking that we be able to exercise our order of condition as it is in place with the DEP.
I've, I've read the packet and talked to several people about it. I haven't talked to the abutter who's against it yet, assuming he's here?
No.
No, he's not.
He's not here?
No.
Well, that makes it a little less, a little more interesting. But you guys have, the Glanico Lake Association over the years has, have gone through, you offered, the drawdown is so important to you and the 80 other homes that live around that lake, that you offered to put him in an artesian well at your cost?
Yes, that was about 10 years ago.
And he, and he totally refused that?
Yes.
How long ago was that?
About 10 years ago.
Well, at the last Board of Health meeting, he also said he doesn't want an artesian well. He wants a shallow well.
He, he wants the what?
His shallow well.
Wants to keep his shallow well.
Even if we give him an artesian well for free, he doesn't want it.
But then I read, but then I read it from a more recent Board of Health, he's allowed to dig a slightly deeper artesian well.
Shallow.
Shallow, no, shallow well.
His shallow well is...
I didn't even know, I didn't even know shallow well existed anymore, that's, that's it, but...
Yeah, they said he could deepen his shallow well. Originally, he was under the impression that that, he couldn't do that. And at the last Board of Health meeting, they did say he could deepen his shallow well, go down another, I guess there, there's tiles, I'm not sure exactly how deep each tile is.
I, I read on, I read what I read on...
Yeah, and so he could add another tile in, I don't know. I, I had hoped to get information on the neighbor's well to know how deep that was because he also has a shallow well, but I unfortunately didn't get that information.
So, if he's, so there are 90 residents, abutters who, I'm guessing 90 something, who are, who are, who care enough to do this drawdown, to spend the money to help him get a new well? And, and there's one person who's against it and he's willing to fight, but he's not even here, though. He's...
Yeah, I'd...
He was notified, I'm sure.
I would...
He came and spoke to me about, and I made him aware that this was for the conversation for the Board of Selectmen via the next agenda.
The part that bugs me a little bit about this is that he was, this isn't a, this isn't a, a, the selectman being mean and saying, "No, we're sorry, we're gonna, we're gonna vote against you and you're gonna have to dig your own well regardless." He was given opportunities for a solution and he ignored them. But we still have to be, he has to remember two things. The town owns the lake and you guys all own your homes, the 90 of you. He keep, and you're that concerned about the invasive species. I read, I read as much as I could take last night because I'm not an invasive species guy, but, but it, and I understand everything that how, I grew up near lakes, I know how lake drawdowns work. If, if, if they don't work, you add more chemicals.
Mm-hmm.
So, this is an avoiding, this is an avoidance of adding more chemicals to your lake water, which I think, I don't, I can't imagine, I can't imagine anybody to be against that.
More complicated than that, yeah.
Yeah, I'm oversimplifying it, but yeah.
I have a question. Can somebody just explain to me, so going from four to seven, right? And that was increments, you're going from four to five, so every year they went from four to five to six to seven. So, what is the, the main, the main benefit of going?
Sue, right now we drawdown at the dam, we measure it at the dam, the high mean watermark down four feet. What it does is it draws the water out from the shoreline and then when the ice forms, when we do a refill, the, the point is that you keep the ice on the lake and let it refill so it tears the roots of the weeds out. Now, a four-foot is only letting us go so far and our, what we have are two invasive species of weed right now and a lot of it is not being affected by a four-foot draw. So, if we go to five feet, we'll get more of it. Now, it's not to say we would definitely go to seven, we may say five feet is good or maybe we go to six feet one year. Like, it was left open to be able to manipulate how much water we had to draw every year. Maybe one year we do go back to a four-foot draw because we don't really need it. And the reason we went to seven is we had, when the dam was being repaired in 1999, the lake was drawn down to seven feet. So, we have data that shows that a seven-foot draw does not hurt any of the species that live in the lake. So, we said, "All right, let's see if we can go up to seven." We also have in the order of conditions, we have to show that if we increase the drawdown to five feet, then we have to take all this data and show that we're not impairing any of the species living in the lake. So, if there was a problem, we would have to stop at a five-foot draw. If not, we could try six. And if six was a problem, we have to stop at a six-foot.
And who is monitoring all of this?
So, we have a dam monitor. There's actually two, the main one and we have a backup, both live on the lake, they're the ones that monitor the drawdown and then we have to give dat, data reports to conservation. When we're doing the drawdown, we have to let them know how far it's going down every week and then when we're done with the drawdown, we hold it as best we can and say it's a four-foot mark.
So, ultimately every time you're going deeper or lower, for that matter, then it goes through the conservation?
Yes.
And they have to make sure that everything is the way that's supposed to be?
Yep, and then we have to do water testing in the summer, which we're doing. If we can do water testing in the winter, we will drill a hole and do some water testing in the winter as well. It's all part of our order of conditions.
Makes sense, thank you.
You're welcome.
If, if this, this happens and there is an issue with this well, are you, will you guys still step in and...
It's part of our order of conditions that we would provide, like, I don't know what it is. We can, we can amend that part to figure out how the best way to do it, but one of the things is, it is like 5,500 gallons or something like that is what we said we would supply. And I went online and I did find companies that give bulk water, they, they can bring a tank, hook it into the house, they can do heating elements to keep it from freezing. The other thing is though, that may not be potable, so then the other part would be maybe providing, you know, bottled water service or something for the two or three months that the water's down so that they have drinking water. But that's part of it and that was part of the thing we were trying to hope to work with him, but he didn't want to.
He refused that.
He didn't, yeah. He wants it like immediately and because his, what if my well goes dry? But the problem is, we are not certain that his well ever goes dry. And at the last Board of Health meeting, he kept saying, "I'm giving them 50% of my water." So, it sounds more like the, the water level drops, they have to wait for things to refill, like it's conservation of water in the house, but I don't think I've ever seen any evidence that their well has gone completely dry on a drawdown on Glanico Lake.
And this, someone will comment and check or they'll, I mean, I don't...
So, he, he calls.
You'll be getting phone calls.
Yeah, you'll be getting phone calls.
Yeah, and the Board of Health has already done an investigation, but it was, and I read that too. And what I found interesting is that is they were, they were able to look at everything but not, not inside the house. They weren't able to see what size the well was.
So, the well, yeah.
So, the town, so the, in fact, so the town's paying money to send the Board of Engineer out there to do a study on this guy's well, but for some reason they weren't allowed inside the house. Those are some questions I had for, for him tonight. I'm like, they, the report even said, "We're assuming it's a four horsepower or whatever it was."
Right, right, right. So, they, from my understanding, having talked with the consultant that went out to his house, they, they basically picked a datum and then checked the, the level of the water in his well against the level of the water in the lake. And it was, you know, about a half a foot equivalency. So, the assumption is the lake goes down, the water in his well starts to go down because the aquifer is tied to the, the, the lake aquifer. But we don't know how far it goes down because there's no data points from when the lake is down in the wintertime. He didn't do a, a full hydrological analysis of his well, so we don't know how long it takes to refill. Like, there's all these other things that, that could have been done, but you can't do them now because there's, there's water in his well. So, it would have to be done in the wintertime. And the more data you have, the more you can characterize the well, but all he was asked to do was just go out and give a high-level assessment of what was going on. So, if you, in that email, he says, "Note that this is not blah, 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 this is not," and these are things that you would tip, more typically do if you're going to fully assess the well capacity and its ability to refill.
And from that 90, those 90 people, 90 abutters that, that live on that lake, that are, how many of these 90s on the association? All of them?
I don't have those numbers with me, but I'd say right now we have about 100 members. There's actually close to 300 residencies that have access to the lake. So, there's backlots, so people on the other side of the road and water, Sue, you know, you don't know off the top, you have waterfront properties, it's probably close to 100.
Um, give and take, yeah, close to 150, give and take a couple.
Waterfront properties.
Waterfront properties.
The waterfront properties pay good water special tax assessment to the town, you're aware of that, right? We're paying extra taxes. And we want to manage our lake, so we, we maintain good water for the future.
Well, I, I don't, feeling of the board, but it might, from what I've read and from what I'm hearing, it would have certainly behooved him to be here tonight and give us a little...
That's my, that's the only problem I have.
Yeah, yeah, but that, but that, but that's not on us. I mean, he was, he was doing, these people, they've been dealing with it for, and the weeds are just gonna get worse and their chemicals and all the other complicated things.
According to the DEP, global warming is causing winters to get warmer and wetter. We used to get two feet of ice in the winter for three, four months, people would be driving their cars up and down. So, a four-foot drawdown with two feet of ice used to kick back the weeds quite a ways out.
Yeah.
Last couple of years, we haven't even had a continuous ice sheet the whole winter. We've iced out a couple of times. The weather, weather also causes more phosphorus runoff, so I'm sure you're aware of MS4 requirements.
Oh, from people's lines and fertilizers, oh, yeah.
That's fertilizing the weeds.
Yeah.
The other problem is the state only approves a certain chemical and over time, the weeds are adapting to that chemical and it's becoming less effective. So, the DE, you know, the DEP is giving lakes pools.
Oh, they're the DEP guidance, they, they gave you, yeah, they gave you permission.
That's why they're allowing to, to fight these weeds back because the, the fish can't find, you know, smaller fish to eat when the weeds are too thick. The turtles get tangled in the weeds and drown. On Buffalo Lake, a child got tangled in the weeds and drowned. We almost had an incident like that on our lake last year when we had a lot of rain and the weeds were just crazy. You know, we're trying to do what's best for the ecosystem, best for human life and maintain the good water on Glanico Lake.
And 150 inhabitants that are around it, not just...
Yeah, well, our way of life is gonna change too if the, if the lake isn't matted and you gotta take more drastic steps nowadays because of the warmer, wetter winters.
They would protect the shoreline too from the ice damage and all that?
Yeah, yeah. It allows people to go in and rebuild their walls and, you know, maintain all that when we, when you do it. I mean, that's a secondary benefit in doing a drawdown, but it's also like, like Frank said, you know, it helps us to reduce the amount of chemicals we're putting in the lake and, and the amount of money we end up spending. In the last 10 years, the Lake Association has spent approximately $62,000 on weed control. So, you know, we're just...
And you understand, well, now you live in a lake now, you understand what the draw, how the drawdown works?
No, I do.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I just, yeah, no, I do. I mean, I, I hear it, I live on a water too, but my only, my only concern with that is, and I would not be opposed to, to, to going with a deal, my only concern is that there has to be some kind of a contingency agreement and he needs to be presented with such. I would, something like this has to be in writing, I assume, sign up.
So, there is, it's in the order of conditions.
They'll do something.
I mean, we can...
If, if they have to do something, they'll do something.
Right, and our actual order of conditions, we say we're gonna provide like 5,500 gallons worth of water. Doesn't say how, doesn't say when, but we could definitely come up with better wording, but we put it in there when we put the order of conditions in, when we request the order of conditions to the DEP. We acknowledged he had a shallow well, we were like, "We'll put a contingency plan in so that if, if need be, we can provide the water for him for that time." But he's not...
If I were to guess, it would be much less expensive to, just to dig his shallow well six feet deeper than putting potable water and freeze protection and all that stuff.
Be proactive, do that before the draw.
You know, I'm, like, if, let's, um, there's already a condition of order, I'd be, I'd be willing to accept a motion to, to go to, um, anybody wanna make a motion? Can I make a motion?
What?
For discussion?
I don't know, I would like to reach out to him and, and see why he isn't here today.
I think, I think if we make a motion and take a vote, he'll, he'll get here.
Okay.
That's my, it's probably the only way, from what I, might be the only...
Can I just add one more comment? So, what other towns do, like Lake Lashway, they do eight-foot drawdown. Other towns, they basically sent notice to residents, "We're gonna do X amount of drawdown and you need to plan accordingly." So, you could send him a letter saying, "We're gonna do a five, we've approved a five-foot drawdown, we'll offer to deepen his shallow well and then it'll be proactive..."
What's, 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 what do you think?
...or line with water buffalo.
You're at four-foot now, what's the benefit to go to six instead of five?
So, the contour, right, you go down four feet, you kill weeds here. You go down more, you kill more weeds. So, the children could swim at the end of the dock and not get tangled in the weeds and drown. So, the fish can find predators and, you know, and eat so the turtles don't drown.
Oxygen levels...
Oxygen level.
Name change.
And the lake gets depleted when there's more weeds. It's better for the ecosystem and the lake, better for human life. I just got one thing, I've been at meetings with the other party and we've talked about this, we've talked a lot about it. We're not asking for anything from the Board of Selectmen except to honor what the DEP, who we consider the expert on environmental protection, made a decision. And as a dam monitor, I'm going only one foot next year. So, if it causes a problem, we'll be back here and we'll stop. And that's what we've talked about. So, to hold one person, to hold a whole lake hostage, and that's what's going on here, is hostage. Let's be honest, it's militant actions. You guys weren't here last time, but he's slamming doors and yelling and screaming as he walked out of here. So, this is a problem when one person affects 150 other people and we're not asking for anything, we've protected him by our order of conditions. We've given those order of conditions, under those conditions of the DEP, we have to give him the water. We don't have an option. So, we're not asking you to make a decision on whether to change anything, we're just asking you to honor what the DEP, the organization that's in charge of environmental protection has said is the correct way to do it. They've given us the conditions. What you're trying to do, if you change it, you're overruling the DEP. And that's our issue tonight, to be honest with you.
I would accept a motion that we honor the DEP's opinion.
And so, his concern was that well, that drying out the well, and that does not constitute any type of a taken. If we are allowing something like this and that will produce some kind of a damage to his well, somewhere on the way, open up us for the lawsuits or anything like that.
I can't imagine.
It's not gonna damage his well.
No, not, but there, there's contingency plans in place and there's everything else. I don't think it's a risk, I think it's just to get him to be a little...
Flexing. Navally.
Navally, yeah, I was gonna say that. I was trying to choose the word, but neighborly is the...
You gotta do what's right for the lake.
So, that, yeah, so, but there was, when was the last time that we did it? It was like 2004, 2002, whatever that says?
2004 was the last order of conditions. It was set at four feet and it, then it kept getting extended. And then with COVID, they said, "Keep extending it." And then when we went to, we, we couldn't do any more extensions, so we had to do a new notice of intent and a whole new order of conditions. And that's when we said, you know, these, the staggered drawdown increasing, like Lake Lashway has a very good record with their drawdown weeds. I'm not sure if Cedar Lake does it. I know a couple of the lakes do it. Cranberry Meadow, that's behalf here and ha, they don't do it and they had a very big weed treatment program this year.
I'm on the Bakerphone, sometimes we do it, sometimes we don't.
Right, right, right.
Yep. So, can I sec, can I, we, do we have a motion? Can I second that for discussion? Did someone make a motion that...
Not yet.
I did, but I don't think I can make a motion.
Well, no, Steve, you can. I mean, historically, Chair is that one, but yeah, you can.
I did.
Okay, I'll second it.
Oh, you did, I'm sorry.
I'll second it.
Yeah, I, I, I made a motion, we adopted the DEP, the DEP plan with the conditions.
What is our role as a selectman to enforce this or, or what?
So, it's essentially that it's our property that we're essentially authorizing them to, you know, operate the drawdown on. So, it's, we're essentially granting authorization for them to conduct the drawdown on, town on ground.
So, the DEP says it's a good thing to do, the Board of Health says it's a good thing to do.
The DEP, yeah, the DEPs allowed them to go up to that.
And conservation...
Has approved that.
Has approved it, so...
The, the plan as presented.
The DEP plan.
Okay. So, I second, who am I to disagree with all the specialists?
So, Mr. Chair, just for discussion, I'm sympathetic to your cause, just for the record, that there's 100-some more people or more are being impacted by, it sounds like one household, I would say that. My concern is, quite honestly, of what's the threshold for the criticality that we would be more interested in? So, is it 100 to one ratio? No, that's okay. What if, what if there was like 20 houses that had this problem? And, and, and would that matter? So, I suppose it's, it's a larger question of, do you potentially, and again, just potential, do you potentially harm the minority to help the majority? And that's what I'm struggling with because I get that there's, it sounds like there's a, I'll be kind and say a certain inflexibility to reach an agreement. It sounds like you've offered an awful lot of things. That's the part of me that says, "Look, you guys are kind of, kind of going over backwards to, to, to really help us out."
The D E P plan.
Okay. So, I second, who am I to disagree with all the specialists?
So, Mr. Chair, just for discussion, I'm sympathetic to your cause, just for the record, that there's a hundred-some-odd people or more are being impacted by, it sounds like one household, I'll just say that. My concern is, quite honestly, of what's the threshold for the criticality that we would be more interested in? So, is it a hundred to one ratio? No, that's okay. What if, what if there was like twenty houses that had this problem? And, and would that matter? So, I suppose it's a larger question of, do you potentially, and again, just potential, do you potentially harm the minority to help the majority? And that's what I'm struggling with because I get that there's, it sounds like there's a, I'll be kind and say, a certain inflexibility to reach an agreement. It sounds like you've offered an awful lot of things. That's the part of me that says, look, you guys are kind of going over backwards to really help us out. But then there's that part of me at the same time, and I just have to be honest, to say, I'm concerned around saying that there is a potential to have a very negative impact on somebody for doing this. And I get it's just one person, but what if it was thirty people or forty people?
But it's not.
But we don't know that.
So.
No, 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 honestly.
Yeah, we do know that.
It's probably not. But I suppose my bigger question is, what's that ratio that we would be more interested in having the conversation? And should it even matter? If there's one person potentially negatively impacted by this, why does, why would we say yes to this? But let's say there were fifty who were negatively impacted.
That would be a different conversation.
Why? Well, and I'm not trying to be funny, but really, why?
No, because it's.
What is the critical level, like percentage ratio wise to say?
But that's not what we're trying to decide. We're trying to get one person, we're trying to get one person to come up in front of us and be a little bit more reasonable and let us go along with the orders of condition. It's only one person out of one fifty, there's not.
Right, but what if it was some other circumstance? For example, it was just one person?
We pretty much setting the, yeah, the president for anything else that could come, not only this specific case, I mean, not this specific situation.
And again, I'm very sympathetic with this. And honestly, that's the only reason why I'm struggling. In like any other universe, I'd say, no, you guys are absolutely right and we should do this. But thinking about the town holistically and what this kind of means for other potential decisions, and again, I don't like to use the, like, okay, this is gonna be a precedent for like everything going forward. But it does concern me that the board would say hypothetically, or that we're having the discussion, to say, look, someone's almost certainly gonna have a negative impact. But since it's only one person?
So.
We have, but, but, but our fallback is the D E P order of condition. It, what we're doing is going along with their decision. We're not, we're not, we're not hurting a homeowner on their own.
If we, if we adopt the order of conditions, which again, I think there's a very valid reason to adopt, for the record, inclusive of Concom saying yes, inclusive of D E P, inclusive of, it's probably, it's not a probably, I'm sure it's much better for the lake, like Frank. It's just, it will injure in some way a single resident or a, or a single household. And just, I kind of have an issue with that.
It may, it might.
It may, it may.
So, we don't, the problem, hold on.
The one thing is, to your point, if we were to injure him, I agree wholeheartedly with you. But the opposite of that is, do you injure a hundred and fifty people for the benefit of one? That's the reverse thing.
Absolutely.
And, and I agree you shouldn't injure anyone. And we're not looking to injure anyone. The thing is, the order of conditions specifically say that he has to be made whole. To make someone whole does not mean you're injuring someone. We're gonna give him fifty, five hundred gallons of water, which just, you know, my well won't take fifty-five hundred gallons of water for the whole time. So, we're giving him more than he presently has today, guaranteed. So, there's no factor of injury to anyone. And we're not asking the board to say right or wrong. The whole law of eminent domain that a town takes, takes over a road and puts it through the middle of my property and benefit the rest of the town because that road will bring business, whatever business it is, that harms me. This case here is not harming anyone. We're asking the town to, there's three organizations, the D E P, who we consider the eminent in the state, to say that this is not gonna hurt anybody. This is, they granted the conditions wholeheartedly. We agreed that we're gonna monitor the lake. So, when I draw it down, if he has a problem with his well, I will stop the dam. This year, I stopped the dam, restarted it again and refilled it. I mean, it was a pain in the, in the neck because it was multiple times, because a person didn't, built his wall illegally and then we had to protect that landowner and go back and refill the lake again and take it down again. So, we as a lake association are not looking to harm anyone and we wanna make everyone whole. This gentleman, we're making him whole. He will not be harmed and I understand your concern. And I agree with you. If one person is harmed, then that should not happen. But in this case here, we're not looking at harming anyone. We're looking to make him unequivocally whole. And he's gonna have more water than his, whatever his well contains. But no one knows what his well contains or what his well pumps because there is no documentation. But did he lose, I was in a meeting here, point blank, we asked him, did you ever run out of water in the last ten years? The answer was no answer. If he ran out of water, he'd be down here wholeheartedly yelling and screaming that I got no water. So, he hasn't been harmed at all from the drawdowns. The seven foot, ten years ago, or what year was that?
Ninety-nine.
Ninety-nine, twenty years.
Yes.
The whole lake went down seven feet. Did he come in here yelling for water then? No. So, at this point here, we're not going to seven feet. We're going, we were four feet last year, we're gonna go to five this year, watch if anything happens. If it does happen, we'll stop. We can fill it back within a couple of days. So, when the drawdown happened this year, I refilled within a week back reversing the flow. We're a spring-fed lake, we're a creek-fed lake. So, the water isn't, just doesn't come from something, it comes from all these different sources. So, we're actually a very well-funded water source that comes in there.
That's actually a very good point. Even, even if, that's probably, and that's probably why the D E P went along with those conditions. In the event, you'd have to get, you'd have, if, the worst-case scenario, you'd have to give him potable, potable water for a day or two before you, before you, before you close the gates up and crank it back up. If that were to happen, but no one knows, I think.
We're not looking to harm any.
Oh, no, no, I, I mean.
No, but it's harm a hundred and fifty and you will harm a hundred and fifty. That's my point.
If we don't manage the weeds in the lake, and this is becoming a big problem because of global warming, we will lose the lake. The town will lose good water special tax assessment because we won't have good water if it's full of weeds. You can't fish, you can't swim, you can't poach. A lot more than one person would be harmed.
Oh, yeah. No, I, I.
No, I think we're all sympathetic. Everything you said makes sense to me especially.
Just try to do the right thing for the environment.
It's just what Bill brought up to and myself, you know, that's just a little.
In, in ninety-nine, when the water went down, I had a point well. Fortunately, I didn't have any issues with it. But a few years later, I ended up having to put a well in. I know many, many people that had shallow wells in ninety-nine and they decided, I'm putting a well in because we're gonna be doing drawdowns for the foreseeable future and I don't wanna have to worry about it anymore. There are two people left on the lake that we know of that have shallow wells. In fact, the person is building a house next to one seventy-one and one seventy-three, they're putting a well in. Everybody has opted to upgrade their property because they know of a constant drawdown every single year. These drawdowns have been going on, I've lived on the lake my whole life, they've been going on since the eighties. We did six-foot drawdowns in the eighties. So, I have no idea if that was a cottage before and they, like, nobody lived there in the wintertime, but I remember the lake being really dimmed down. And that's, at the time, that's the only thing that was helping us with the weeds. So, I understand your point, Bill, but at one point, does it get to, we're doing the drawdown to benefit everybody, your community that you live in, your responsibility, after thirty years of living on this lake, don't you think you should take some responsibility on your own and improving your property? I mean.
And honestly, you know, that's what I'm struggling with because it makes, everything you're saying makes absolute sense. Like, there's no, absolutely. It's just, there's that little splinter.
So, I know, I know of, and I wanted to confirm at Cedar Lake, Lake Lashway, they all have town water now. So, like, it's not an issue, but I know at one time they didn't. My understanding, when Lee Lyman was owner of Lycott, ten years ago, he wrote a letter to the Board of Selectmen and in it, he referenced Cedar Lake and what, apparently what they did was, what Frank said, we're doing three feet this year. If you have an issue, know that we're going to four feet next year. You have a year to figure out what you're gonna do with your property. That town, that's how they did it. And, and every year, they increased their drawdown. They told people, if you have an issue, then you're gonna have to deal, we'll help you out this year, but next year, you're gonna be on your own.
So, what are you guys looking to draw down this year?
Go to five feet.
So, from four to five, which is what, which is what the, follows the, yeah. If that works, maybe next year you guys come back, maybe you go to six.
So, we gotta monitor.
But even the D E P said you can't go, you shouldn't go more than seven. So, we'll have three more years. But if you can, if Andy can put it back in, in two or three days.
Well, I think.
If there is an issue.
Based upon what, though? Meaning, and again, I'm not trying to be silly, is it?
No, he closes the gate.
Cause it's, there's a valve that's.
No, 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 no.
No, 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 I know what he's saying. So, so, if you got a phone call, we say we get down to five feet, you got a phone call, I have, you know, it's too low, I'm, I don't have any water.
Yeah, it takes me two hours to.
Right, but so, that's, that's two different, that's two different things. Normally, he says, I have no water. So, if you have no water, well, we need evidence. So, somebody would need to go out and assess the well. But then, if it's, if it's just a really low refill, that's a different story. You have water, you have to conserve and wait. We don't.
But if you didn't draw it down, you wouldn't have to wait.
That's under, that's true. But at the same time, in a drought situation, the water's down anyway. So, I, I.
Yeah, but that's a force majeure versus like, like, we're, like, we are really saying.
So, but my point is, I'm sorry, my point is that he claims he runs out of water.
Yeah.
But he doesn't.
So, he's never proved.
He's never shown any evidence that his well has gone dry.
Yeah.
And so, I don't know what happens when it goes to five feet. Maybe it's not really much more affected than four. I don't, I don't know. Because he, he, it's an issue. We're at four, I'm fine when it's at four, okay, but does that mean you have a full well or does that mean your well's half full? Like, where's the level? We don't know. So, if we go, a few years ago, when Todd was Conservation Commission, he was using a stick, I think, or something, as a marker and somebody moved it. So, we went lower than four feet.
Oh, which I do remember.
And so, he was, ah, and, and so, that's what we found out from Todd, he had to go back and refill. But he didn't run out of water.
I'll tell you what I'll do. Since I believe in compromise at the end of the day, what I would be happy to go along with is that, again, take it down to like five, you know, this year. But if we had issues, we're gonna have a very different conversation next year. And again, part of that is going to be that we would need quantitative evidence from him based upon the winter, when it's drawn down, of, on this day, my well ran out, engineer came out, here is a notarized occasion that happened.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Or two, water, again, making something up, that I, it took me three hours to refill or to have to do wash again. Cause I'm very sympathetic to that, too. So, if we can come up with that understanding, knowing that I will, I don't wanna say conditionally support this, but basically say, look, we really gotta monitor this and try to find a way to make everybody, not as happy, because no, because no, not everyone's gonna be happy on this. I, I just wanna make everyone as sad, as, as, as little sad as possible.
And they can leave their garden hose running the whole winter till they empty their well.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So, it has to be an engineer has to come in.
Absolutely.
So, I can run my well dry at any time, just turn the hose out. So, if he, if the person does that, then we all have to realize that we're gonna go in and it's not gonna be a verbal thing from him or us.
I know.
It'll be someone outside that we bring in and say, here's the fill rate and where it could go. You get every, every house gets perp tested.
No, I guess, you had me at hello on that. I, I, because this would make me happier to say, look, we're trying to have oversight to make sure everyone's taken care of as best we can, but the onus of proof will be on the person who does not want this to happen. But I'm just being honest with you all. If he can prove to me at least that, look, this is what happens when this happens, I'm gonna have a much different view on it. But to your point, there is no, there's nothing right now, again, quantitatively, that tells me in all these reports, that outside of that, yes, it's part of the aquifer, so as the lake goes down, naturally, his well goes down. What I don't see is what the actual empirical evidence is of impact on them. So, if I get complaints, that's gonna be my first thing of, okay, show me. Like, and don't just, you know, pour me a jug of water. You know, literally have an engineer come in, prove it to me. And then honestly, we might have a different conversation next year. So, this probably took way longer than you guys hoped for.
No, it's fine. I want you guys to be fully informed on what's going on and how we went through the whole process and.
So, I'm okay proceeding with this with these, with the knowledge that we may have to reassess this.
But that, but that's already, all we're doing is adopt, the motion is just to adopt the order of condition, all that is already in there.
So, the condition is that if, if we, we're good with this and if, and if he reaches out and, and with his engineer and says, here's my stamped engineering report, my well is dry, we take away, we modify.
Yes.
This, okay.
I'm good with that.
But it needs to be an official engineer that, that is involved.
Yeah, fair enough.
Yeah.
Fair enough, deal.
So, so, again, the motion in the second is just to adopt.
Yeah, just to adopt it for now.
Just with, for now.
Just know that it might be readdressed, but yeah, I'm good.
With extra verbal conditions, when we have a second one.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No, opposed? None? unanimous.
All right.
Thank you.
If it comes in front of you guys again, please let us know and we'll become a better.
We will.
Thank you.
And feel free to keep us up to date, too.
We'll do. I'll let Rose know that we're good to go.
Thanks, guys. How's it going?
All right, so. Shepherd Hills.
Committee member.
School committee membership.
All right, so, we've been notified by Stephen Lamarche, Superintendent of the Dudley Charlton Regional School District, that the school committee established the membership of the M S B A Shepherd Hill Regional High School School Building Committee. They have invited myself and the Dudley Town Administrator, John Ruda, to be part of this committee. They are looking for two more representatives, one from the Finance Committee or a local budget official, and a community member with architectural, engineering, or construction experience. We received one request from Richard Luck, who has, sorry, Luke, who has been in the construction business for over twenty-five years. The board is being asked to recommend Mr. Luck to the School Committee Building Committee. The Finance Committee will be making a recommendation at their next meeting for their member.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Mr. Luck's background on this is astonishing. That, that, and we're actually lucky to have him volunteer, so I would, I would make that motion.
I second the motion.
I know him as well. He's had, he's had a couple of kids go through the system, probably one more on his way. So, just, yeah, his background is impeccable.
And we're actually lucky to have him volunteer, so I would, I would make that motion.
I second the motion.
I know him as well. He's had, he's had a couple of kids go through the system, probably one more in his way, so just, yeah, his background is impeccable. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No?
All right, the next is a request to.
Derek, do you need us for anything, or are you just? Oh, okay, in case. Yeah, yeah, thanks.
Have a good one.
Yeah, the lake crowd, that rowdy lake crowd left. Thanks, thanks for your time.
All right.
Mr. Shorty, you want to?
Yep, so in July of two thousand and six, the Board of Selectmen issued a earth removal permit to Joel Pissarsik of twenty-one Old Mugget Hill Road, with the condition that a surry bond be posted in the amount of fifty-six thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars for the restoration of property if needed. The last permit that was issued on this project was back in two thousand and fourteen, and Mr. Pissarsik has contacted our office, asking the bond to be released for it. Building Commissioner Curtis Meskis, Meskis visited the property on August twenty-fourth and twenty-twenty-two and reviewed the area of earth removal and said that the site is sufficiently stabilized to prevent erosion and runoff, with fixtures attached to this report, uh, we're recommending that the board release the bond.
Yeah, everything looks good to me, so I would just motion to release.
Yeah, I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nope.
Aye, have it. Now we are special town meeting.
All right, special town meeting scheduled for Monday, October twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two, at seven o'clock PM at the Charlton Middle School. Uh, attaches the draft warrant, as you can see, it's pages and pages long at this point.
He's being facetious, we have four items, don't worry.
Yeah. After review, um, I will forward the request to the finance committee for their review. They're currently under the, undertaking the capital request and other review right now. That'll be tomorrow night for anybody so interested.
Do we really not have any planning board or like any other amendments?
No, we've received nothing.
All right, so this will be a very short town meeting, but important ones, please show up. So I'll make a motion to close, to officially close the warrant.
I second the motion.
And we have no bills of a prior year.
I was going to say.
Are we sure they don't have anything they're going to want to add?
We can close it tonight.
Yeah, and they have not indicated that they have anything to be considered.
Okay.
So really, for those at home, just so you know, what we'll be doing, and assuming nothing else, we're going to be doing free cash, uh, make any amendments to the, to the budget from May, et cetera, so it's going to be really a expenditure meeting, but it shouldn't be that, that long, so please come. Oh, anyway, sorry, I made a motion.
I second it, so.
Yep, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have. And now we are under old business. Doesn't seem to be any business committee reports, doesn't seem to be any BOS policy review, I think that's pretty good.
Do you want to just do the one other, other business quick? The special one-day license.
Oh, yes.
All right, so attaches an application submitted by Emily Greer for a special alcoholic beverage license to be used on October first, twenty-twenty-two, from four-thirty PM to nine-thirty PM at Camp Jocelyn, one fifty Richardson's Corner. The application, um, has been forwarded to all relevant department heads and have all approved per the board's policy. If the special alcoholic license is approved, the date should be the day before and the day after the event to allow for cleanup. The recommended motion is attached.
Thank you and Mary for kind of hustling on this one. I know they were very nervous about this, so. Um, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve this special alcoholic beverage license submitted by Emily Greer, but the dates on the license to be September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two, October second, and to be used on October first, twenty-twenty-two, from four-thirty, nine-thirty at Camp Jocelyn.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any, here, no, not opposed?
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Enjoy your wedding. Be safe.
Look, I have something under, um, other business at unknown time of posting, can I do that now?
How long is it going to take?
Well, we can, we can save till the end, that's fine. There could be more time.
You can save it till after we've done this. No, I'm wasting time, no, go ahead, go right ahead, absolutely.
So because Old Home Day was such a reno, a lot of our vendors who make the majority of their, do, the majority of the fundraising during Old Home Day, they weren't able, um, not one piece of Fido was sold because they couldn't even turn on the fire. Like, it was, it was, it was, everybody knows that day, it was a disaster.
Especially, especially, I'm not, you know, um, I know that, um, Reyes, they, they had a basket, there's eleven hundred dollars of items in the basket.
They only sold, you know, a few tickets, like, we need, and the, so, um, we kind of throw around the idea of having a town yard sale on the common or something to invite the vendors, and I guess there's other organizations that do that. But Mary throughout, I was in the office today, and she goes, why don't you guys do maybe a fall festival? Um, and then Basia kind of jumped in and said, well, how about we have, we possibly have music, can we do it at the community center and kind of, have, invite the specific town vendors, the Boy Scouts, the lodge, the, you know, certain, you know, kind of in, in invite thing and host a festival. I know that, that there is, um, the.
Scarecrow.
Scare, scarecrow contest. Is it something that can, and the vendors that already pulled the permits, can they sort of transfer over without spending more money on permits? Can we, just, again, these are our, our scouts and our local organizations that do a lot for this town.
If we could make it happen, sure.
So if Basia and I will, will, um, we, we want the, us to vote, like, to kind of.
We're making it a, 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 our boards.
So, so.
We want us to kind of sponsor, okay, okay, that's what I meant, because I just wanted to.
Again, you had, had hello, it's, it's.
Okay, awesome, perfect.
All in favor?
Aye.
And of course, Andrew will be asking you for help, and Mary, um, Mary and Kara are very excited to jump in on this.
Okay, so that brings us to, where are we now? Next meeting announcement?
Uh, no.
No goals?
Goals and objectives.
Goals and objectives.
So, Mr. Chairman, the only goal that's kind of a priority for me, and this should come as no surprise to Andrew, is that with the amount of funding we'll be asked for over the next, you know, fiscal year, give, give, or you mean the next twelve months, one of the goals I'd like is to really emphasize to Andrew of, to develop a true capital spending plan with his proposals for us to, to, to consider. Obviously, trying to minimize tax increases as best we can, but also knowing that there's only a finite amount of dollars.
Yep.
So, you know, Andrew, that's, I mean, I know that you're going to probably do that anyway, but to me, that's something that we really got to focus on this year because between Shepherd Hill, between potentially the senior center, the fire station, you know, there are so many things coming up. I really think we need not just a manifest of all things we need, but basically, hey, here are some proposals on how you can fund them. But outside of that, um, you know, I'm good with, with like everything else that was on there, but in fact, I think we can even take, take, take a few off, but.
I'm, I'm fine with that as well. I think for what you're, what you just asked, I think he's got it halfway done already.
He better.
Yeah, yeah, he might not.
I can refine it.
I've seen something, I remember looking at something very, that looked very similar to that.
That's something that actually went through my head today, of like, you know, all right, what's the, what's the target timeline that we need to look at as we're considering the fire station, you know, Shepherd Hill, uh, the roofs, and then really just kind of, you know, what pots do we need to pull from, because, you know, it all comes down to tax dollars.
Kind of like, kind of like our own little mini master plan on, on our future.
On capital.
Exactly.
Yeah, he had a spreadsheet that went out, two double Z's.
I think some of these we can strike, though, with the review of fees, because we did that last year. Streamlining the permitting process, you can probably take a look at, implementation of like, of like e-permitting. I know you already did that, you took the thing, so, I mean, basically, I think infrastructure solicitation of business, transparency, and then again, you know, the, the like master capital funding plan.
The transparency is fabulous, the, the e-permitting, you know, all the new online stuff is amazing. Yeah, I, I agree completely.
And I'm sure we can discuss more, but.
Yeah, that's fine.
Town administrators report.
All right, so just briefly, uh, we have put the police station roof out to bid, uh, right now, the bids are due September twenty-eighth at two o'clock. Hopefully, we get some, uh, some very sharp pencils on that project. As part of the ARPA funding, we are putting, or we're preparing to put out the public safety radio project. Right now, I'm just probably at ninety-five percent completion on that, so hopefully that'll be out within the next two weeks. Working with LB Communications, who's kind of guiding, uh, guiding us through that process, but, um, hopefully, once we get that done, we'll have a fully, full new, uh, P twenty-five radio system that addresses some of the deficiencies with the existing system where they don't have service right on Route twenty and Route one sixty-nine. Notification to kind of everybody that the Dudley Charlton Regional School District, uh, loan authorization vote did pass, so kind of plugging it into your radar, goes along with the capital spending plan, uh, whether or not we need to start talking around a debt exclusion vote, which could potentially be at, at the May election.
I'm not saying a word yet.
As I said, for discussion, an official, you know, an official action, um, but also just kind of relating from the Economic Development Commission, too. We had a meeting today, and the EDC has launched a new website, um, that's, that's right on the main page of our town website that kind of redirects, that's dedicated toward resources for people that are looking to, um, start business and interested in moving to town, so. You know, we'll be putting out some stuff on social media tomorrow to try to get some attention to it, but take a look. Provide feedback.
Coffee roasters, I was talking to Karen the other day, and she said that was fabulous. She loved it. She said the easiest town to deal with, she loved ever, she's thinking about moving. It's the e-permitting, everything.
Good.
Now we are. Next, next meeting announcement is our all boards committee meeting, September twentieth, six PM.
So while I got the board, I just want to, um, bring up for consideration, I will be out of town on October eleventh, which is the October meeting, and right now, or the first meeting scheduled for October. So the last meeting is September's the twenty-seventh. At some point, we also have to meet with finance committee. Pleasure of the board, would you want to have like a regular meeting on the twenty-seventh, and then a very abbreviated meeting on the fourth, and try to consolidate that with the finance committee meeting?
If we, you know, there's another good point, I'm glad you brought that up, because I'm, I'll be out of town on the twelfth, and probably at an airport on the eleventh, so let me know if I'll be here on the eleventh.
Well, why don't we pencil in a meeting on the fourth? I actually might have to like virtual it on that one regardless, but that being said, we can always cancel it if we don't need it, or just take it from there. I mean, anything that they can push off, we can just push off, because I suppose worst case in the month of October, we could always meet the third week instead to, to, to cover off, so, so there'll be some flexibility in, in October.
Yeah, and I'm just looking at the fact that we have, we have special, we probably want to have a meeting before then. Probably not the week before, so.
No, that works for me.
All right.
All right, uh, Mr. Chairman, do you have anything else, or Andrew, or the rest of the board? Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session under MGL, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, A number three, discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, uh, ZBA appeal. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body, as the chair so declares, enter reconvening in open session if needed, and then to adjourn.
Second? All in favor? Oh, oh, recall.
Aye.
Aye.
Steve, aye?
Aye.
Cool, thanks, everybody. We are now in executive session.
Uh, can I, can I take too many breaks?